Good evening, welcome. We are here for regularly scheduled city council meeting at the city council chambers in Marshalltown at 10 West State Street. Today's date is February 26, 2024, and the time is 5:30 PM. I call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Poop?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Very good, full house. Time for public comment, and so members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. You are to approach the mics, state your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes, and unless I authorize longer, I do have a little three-minute timer up here. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and councilors are not able to engage in or debate these items raised by members of the public and no action may be taken on them, otherwise we might fail to comply with the open meetings laws. I keep forgetting to tell people, okay, it's time to get to the mic, so right now it is. Anybody is welcome.
Alan Kemp, 612 North Fourth Avenue, Marshalltown. I'm up here checking on how we're coming along on this agenda for all these cars, because we have more problems than just the cars. We've got tires piling up, garbage, everything else. I've read a couple of articles, and it all sounds like excuses to me, where I want to see progress. I remember I used to own kids' toy here in town back in about 2005, 2006. I built a building on North Third Avenue, just way across the River Bridge, and I had five cars that had caught fire on the west side of that building. The city sent me a letter stating they were going to fine me $100 per car until I moved them. Why doesn't that apply to the rest of these, all the way from Marion Street to Third Avenue? We've got ones that are parking semi, semi-trailers in the backyard. It seems like we've got several other junkyards starting in this town. I think you all need to just take time, drive around, take a look, and see how bad this town really is, especially down where I live. It just keeps getting worse, and I'm sure there's other people have things to say about it also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lonnie Hoagland, I'm here to represent Hoagland Auto Plaza and myself as a citizen both ways. I've been reached out to by the city.
We need your address, too, Lonnie.
Whoops, sorry, 1408 East Main Street. I've been reached out to by the city to clean up. I don't know the exact number, maybe five different junky cars in the past couple weeks, so I want the citizens to rest assured the city is trying to do their part, but that's where I say, he mentioned touched garbage cans. It's not just automobiles. I don't know what the ordinances are on junk automobiles. I don't know what they are that consists of a junkyard. I don't know what consists of a full garbage can, but I would help your police officers by take whatever codes you got and rip them up, start fresh with something that's understandable by a citizen, that calls a junky car something. I had a citizen reach out to me over the weekend on Saturday. I went and looked at his cars, because people call me they want to sell their old cars. They're trying to do what they're supposed to do. He's got like six or seven cars in this residential neighborhood. I mean, it looks terrible. I'm not going to ruin the guy's address and say his address, you can figure it out, but I couldn't buy them, because half of them don't have titles. Hey, do you have a title? Do you have a title? Nope, nope. That one's messed up, but that, you know, again, they need to make something, so if something is true junk, other states have done it, where a recycler, where a licensed dealer, where a licensed recycler, they don't have to have a real title. They can have proof that the last person, John Doe, owned it, as long as it's going to a recycler to get recycled into scrap metal. I'm saying get more Cleaniak-type things going, get people to have pride. That's going to be your worst thing, to get people to have pride. You can't make them have pride, but the town is terrible. You don't need no more flipping statues out on 13th Street and fancy rainbow murals. You need to clean up the town so it looks better, because I think everybody could agree, but you've got to make it doable, obtainable.
Thank you.
Amy Dimerly Snyder, Lily Mae Chocolate, 1106 West Main. I'll go off of what Lonnie just said. I agree, we could all do a lot more to clean up our areas. So something we've been doing at Lily Mae is we give kids free ice cream for filling up garbage bags, and I think, you know, it's one of those things, you watch people walk by trash, right, and they don't pick it up, but anything we can do to pick up trash in our neighborhoods or help people to clean up their own neighborhoods are good. I also wanted to give a huge shout-out to the chamber. I'm a member, and my membership is super important for our business and for a lot of businesses, and the economic breakfast that just happened a couple weeks ago, so it's been a little bit, was phenomenal. I took four of my staff to it, and it was super eye-opening for them, because they don't get to go to professional-type events, and it really was eye-opening on how to attract businesses, to attract employees, to make our town better. The other thing that I wanted to say about the chamber is they did, Dylan Does did a phenomenal job, Officer Wolf at the esports event that brought tons of people into our community, shoppers for us, and I just want to give them a huge thank you, so.
Thank you. Mic is still open.
Cynthia Ragland, 1502 West Lincoln Way, and I totally agree, we all want our town to be cleaner. I do want to point out, we do have some really good things happening in Marshalltown, too. I'd like to highlight a couple Friday nights in Marshalltown this month. If you were able to go to the Roundhouse, the Bobcats were hosting basketball, and you walk in, and we're really lucky that we've got a great facility now, and it's a great surrounding. Going to several sporting events in the state, we should be really proud of our youth. Our student section is the biggest, I think, that we see at any other town, even some of those big city towns that have the brand-new facilities, and they're enthusiastic, they're respectful. We had a couple of community members that got ruckus in the Roundhouse going, which really has brought a lot of positive energy to the Roundhouse. We have kids there, from little kids that are cheering for the Bobcats, to all different backgrounds of people that are there, and the great thing is, we are all cheering for the same team, and it's our whole town. Following that fun event is the fifth quarter now at Wayward Social, which I think is also really cool, because a lot of the kids are there after the game, and they're bowling in their socks and having a great time. It's kids from all different backgrounds mixed together, and as parents, you can sit in the background, there's some coaches there, and one of the best things about it that another parent pointed out to me is not one kid is on their cellphone, and they're all just having fun together. And so when you look at these things on just, you know, a random Friday night, it's like we should feel really proud that we do have these good things going on, and it's not just one person or one group that has done it, it is all of us working together, so I hope we can continue to do that.
Deb Millizer, Director of the Marshalltown Central Business District, and I want to address the most common question that I am asked these days, but before I-
After your address, right?
Oh, 34 West Main Street. I thought that was a given now, sorry.
We all know who we are, but-
So the most common question that I have been- So, the most common question that I have been asked, probably since, so, maybe last summer, was, when is La Michicana going to open? Marshalltown's new ice cream and coffee shop on Main Street, it's located where Headliner used to be located for so many years. They have a soft opening going on right now. This week and next week, they'll be open from 4 to 8 during the week, and on the weekends from 11 to 8. Currently, they're serving ice cream. They have not moved on to the coffee and the sandwiches and the other things. I think this is a good story of a hometown girl. Maggie grew up in Marshalltown, and she came, she came back, she has other businesses, and she's investing in Marshalltown. And then, also, we have Jake Reynolds, who owns Black Iron Barbell. He has moved to downtown where Diamond Vogel used to be, so if you go get your ice cream, you can go work out at Black Iron Barbell. And then, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, well, I'll circle this back around. I had a huge emotional paycheck today, and it was unexpected, and it was little. It's little in the scope of things, but sometimes the little things are big things. I walked across the street today to mail some letters, and I turned around, and there was a family of six in the MCBD alleyway, you know, that has the lighting and the mural on the ground, eating ice cream from La Michicana already. That's exactly what that alleyway is used for, I mean, what we want it for, the safety going from the parking lot to shopping on Main Street. We want it well-lit, but we want people to enjoy outdoor spaces. So, I actually walked over and talked to the family, because I was so excited about it. They were taking selfies there, too, so it was, it was an emotional paycheck win for the MCBD and for Marshalltown today, so I just wanted to share that. Little win, but a big win, so that's all I have to add tonight.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, my name's Jim Land, I live at 610 North Fourth Avenue. I'm asking you this, Mr. Mayor. You had two weeks to work on this project. What have we got done?
I can't respond.
Why can't you? I brought it to the council. Can you fill me in on this? I took it to my, took it to my council member, and he's related to you, and nothing gets done. Why, why, why does it take so long?
Because of our rules, I can't respond. Maybe in my mayor comments, I will.
When do you think that's going to be possible, that you can respond?
In about 10 minutes, depending on how many other people talk.
Okay. My next question is, is I invite all of you people, all around a bus, if you're willing to come down and take a ride with me, whoever drives a bus through Marshalltown, and I'll show you. I'll show you what kind of town we live in, and it'll open your eyes. I had some people down, took them for a little ride, and it kind of really opened their eyes up. And I know where you live at, I went over by your house, and you don't have any of that stuff lying around, front or back. I went down the alley, I seen your name on the garage. I don't see any of that stuff. You don't have to live with it. And we have to live with it, and I'm getting sick of it. I'm just getting sick of it, and something needs to be moving. Here we are, two weeks, we've been working on this thing since Sue Cahill was in office, and before that even, and Bobby Schubert was here, and Thompson was here, and it's, it's just, and they, at least I can say one thing before Bobby Schubert and Thompson, the mayor, they come down, walked through the alleys with me. They did. They weren't afraid of coming down and see what's going on. We walked through the alleys, and we seen what going on, but I, I think the whole deal is, nobody can get any help up here. One person fights everybody, or everybody fights everybody. I don't know what's going on, but something needs to be done. And like Al, I say, and if you're, if you're willing to write a new ordinance on the, on the cars and stuff, it's still, we've got a lot of problems besides that, where the nuisance officer could be handling on a day-by-day basis. I mean, there's dumpsters in the alley full of garbage, overfilling. I sent this guy a picture, I sent this guy a picture today, and you've got to drive around them, in the alleys. Why should I? I'm a tax payer. I pay my taxes. Why should I have to drive around dumpsters?
You're coming up on your three-minute limit, sir.
I understand that, but I want to get it out. I want to make sure, I'll be back. I'm not going to lay over and play dead.
No, but you are going to have to sit down right now.
Okay, I will, but I'm just-
No, I mean, right now, sit down.
I will.
Thank you. And you can't make comments like that, sir, unless you want to get kicked out of here. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Joe Carter, 610 Elmwood Drive, Marsh Town Company, Crosby Park, Willard Hopkins, if, and if my watch would stop listening to me. Just wanted to again thank everybody for their time and their service here. Greg Nichols, you told me about a book. I just received it, I've been out of town for a week, and picked it up at Stepping Stones, and so I'm using this as an avenue to say, I'm not really in favor of getting all my books from Amazon, so you can get anything you want from Stepping Stones, they will always order it, bring it in for you, and so it was a way for me to get an extra book and utilize a shopping local. I was a little bit scared of the title when Greg first showed this, or told me about this book, but I'm going to find out. And it says it's about long-pervailing assumptions about blacks, Jews, Germans, and I think Thomas Sowell is a phenomenal author, so I'm excited to, to read that, so we'll see where that goes, but I got Stepping Stones. I do love Mr. Smiley Face, Lonnie, right? He puts those smiley faces in different spots, there've been a few around our businesses. The only, one disagreement I'd have with him is, is that I think we can do all of that. We need to have these gathering places, as well as the cleanup, and so I know you guys are working on things, it's not all easy, as everybody might think it is, and so I appreciate the effort that you're putting into that. And I also will apologize about the swimming pool that we have at Center Street and Main. We're going to have to take it down and look for another winter season, who could believe the weather that we're having, so thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Oh, and I want to finish with, I think there might be an ACE reporter over here for the TR, Al, who was listening the last time we were here, because Mr. Hoop's picture was in the paper for his military service, this is last week.
Again, it was. I didn't recognize him either, it was a good picture.
I'll just be really quick. Lonnie Hogland, 1408 East Main, again. It's sad that people got to get their blood pressure up on all this stuff that makes you get your blood pressure up, but I feel the city is on it. I think, at this minute, the city's on it. And he touched on our swimming pool, our new swimming pool. Don't get discouraged on that, and don't get in a big hurry to take it down. We might get winter yet, we might get rid of this T-shirt, and a good friend of mine said, hey, that ice skating rink thing, that is just cool, and I went past it, one of the, must have been about- Must have gone down. There was a lot of people that night, and it was, I'd hate to think that one night was the whole season, but let's do it again next year, but hope for better.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for that. Now we go on to the mayor, council, and administrative comments. Does anybody at the council table here, here have any comments?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
It appears that there may be some movement on the library levy, possibly undoing what they did last year. It's by no means done. Let's hope that they continue in that. It didn't work, and I think they know it, so hopefully they come back for getting the library restored. If you know anybody who's in the state house, give them a call, make it keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else up here?
Honor, if I may?
You may.
I'm going to put a plug out for the Marsh Town Police Citizens Academy. It'll be, deadline to registration is March 8, I believe, and it'll begin March 19, and it'll run from 6 to 9. And if anybody's interested, I've got plenty of applications up here. I would really highly encourage everybody to take part. You learn a lot, see what's behind the scenes, it's not just riding around in the car looking for things. It's really interesting, so anybody interested, I'll leave them right up here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I had the privilege of stumbling uptown last night after a meeting at the library, and saw that La Michicana was open, and had an ice cream cone. I just had a baby cone, it was very good, so I just want the public to know, if any of you want to have an ice cream cone, but you're on a diet, just call me, and I will go up there and have that ice cream cone for you. So, my number's in the paper, it's on the city website, so I, I'll have to sample every flavor, so it'll take me a while, but I'm glad to see more businesses downtown, so I like what Deb had to say about the two new businesses downtown, and hopefully we got some more coming, so thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next it's time for mayor, for the city administrator comments, and time for the mayor comments, so I guess I've got to give a double. Let me, at this time, when I can, respond about the nuisance thing. I will tell you, I've been pretty busy as the city administrator. I've met with all of the department's staff heads, including our nuisance officer and the people in that department that don't have a head right now. We've been working diligently to try to figure out how to reconfigure who is doing what in the city, in terms of where different departments and where different people will be. I've had a good discussion with the nuisance department, they are collecting information about the way other cities are handling things, in terms of what kind of notice is given, is it mailed, is it done by registered mail, certified mail, return receipt requested, posted on the door, put a sign in the front yard, that kind of thing, what kind of deadlines we have. My recommendation, having been the volunteer administrative law judge to handle nuisance things for years, for free for the city, was that we also do accelerated fines for people. We only collected $17,000 last year in fines for people that don't cut their grass, they don't mow their lawn, and we have to pay contractors to do it. I know that we've had a real problem finding contractors to do this work, that's been a significant problem for both the snow and, and grass removal and that sort of thing. And I do personally drive through the alleys, and I've been down there, I've taken photos, I used to do that, as part of this voluntary nuisance group. There are about 20 of us that will go around town, identify those nuisances, take photographs with the Polaroid, go to the county courthouse, to the assessor's office. We would get the Sidwell number, we'd write it down, we'd bring it back to the city officer who is in charge of prosecuting those things. And so, I know there were 20 people years ago that were wearing a cap and had a badge as voluntary nuisance officers. Not many people I know of, and if you ask the nuisance department, they would confirm this, have made as many complaints as I have about the way we need to work on things. We're facing some budget crunches, thank you to the legislature for that, but we are trying to figure out if there's another way to use other resources to have extra help, because we've only got one person handling things. I did learn that we are not doing it just on a nuisance complaint-based basis, he's actually writing things up as he's going along, and there's some talk about getting the police department involved a little bit more in being able to write up nuisances and turn those things in. You guys don't see what goes on behind the scenes here, and now that I could talk, I can reply to those things, so we're working on it. To turn to a more happy thing, we actually have a state champion in our midst, and so I invited the coach and, and our state champion. Would you guys come forward, please? We'd love to hear from the coach. Introduce your bowler, I know what Aiden's name is, but would you introduce him and tell us a little bit about what he did and how he compared to the rest of the whole state in the tournament?
Yeah, my name's Coach Nate Clark. It's my third year as the high school bowling coach. This is Aiden Cowan, he's a sophomore. Going into state qualifier, he shot four games that were one shot away from being perfect, so going into it, he was pretty hot.
You think?
Qualified eighth from our substate, which is, we had a very tough substate with Waukees, which is the number highest qualifier, and then Waterloo West, which was top-five highest, highest averages for the state. So, he finished eighth. He was the actual lowest qualifier in the state tournament out of all four districts. He, then at state, they do three games, and then they take the top eight. He qualified eighth again with a 708, 708 series, so it's like a 230-something a game His first match, he went up against the one seed, which he actually got to bowl with during qualifying. He beat him like 195, 191, and then he beat a kid from Waukees in the second round, 246, 220-something, and then he beat Waterloo West, Rush Steen, in the championship, 267, 240-something. So, pretty awesome experience.
Pretty phenomenal, he's just a sophomore.
He's only a sophomore, and the entire team are sophomores, so probably be hearing us, about us again next year.
That is so cool, I hope the picture got the nice medal rather than that, too. Pretty cool, I don't doubt there's a trophy coming as well. Aiden, you're welcome to speak if you're not uncomfortable with it, you don't have to, if you don't want to. Okay, well, good, good job, Coach, good job, Aiden. We love having state champions here. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, on to the next one. Years of service for February. Sandy Gowdy has been with the library five years. I don't think she's here, but she's a wonderful resource at that library, which is a wonderful place, and there was a good meeting there, held yesterday, an informational meeting about the PEPAL and the local option sales tax. Oh, no, my daughter is trying to do a FaceTime with me right now. It's my birth, it's my, it's, it's my birthday, and so I'm missing out, oh, you should see, you should see the grand child here. Say, say hi to the city council. Bye, bye, Noel. Talk to you later. That kid is too cute.
Sharon, he goes home with you, not with us.
That kid is too cute for words. Anyway, there was a good informational meeting at the library. It's a, a perfect use of that building to have a meeting there on Sundays, but let's keep it open, and let's do the fundraising, and if the city has to help out, we just need to do that. So, thank you, Sandy, for your five years. Lance Griesel is here with, we're hitting a three-decade mark, and that is pretty cool, Lance. Those of us that have been kicked around for a while know you well, and watch your kids go through sports and that sort of thing. Take it away, pal.
I'm Bob Branson, I am Justice Superintendent at the Water Pollution Control Plant as of today, so I'm no longer your interim office manager, so I'm thankful for that, but tonight I have the privilege of giving Lance Griesel his 30-year award for working with the city of Marshalltown. Lance started fresh out of school, and a little side note, he is now the senior-most employee that the city of Marshalltown has, so he's been here 30 years. He's one, I'm two, it used to be, Brenda was one, he was two, I was three, so at Water Pollution Control, we held the top three for, for a while, and now Lance is your senior man.
Wow. That is awesome. Thank you. You know, that reminded me, I forgot to do one other thing today, too, and that is to announce to everybody that Cindy Kendall is here tonight. Talk about the long-term employees. Cindy Kendall was one of those who was able to come in here to work for the city in the finance department after we had the Iowa Trust scandal. We lost more than 60 employees because of that. The council and mayor at the time, they cut their salaries in half, and we needed help to dig out from a pretty dark hole that we were in. Cindy was instrumental in doing that, became our finance director, she righted the ship, and she did such a good job here that the Iowa League of Cities hired her to go teach other finance directors around the state of Iowa to, to do their job, and she's been helping since then. She also helped over at Iowa State University, which just gave her a huge award, and last week she was kind enough to say that I could contract hire her so that she can dovetail with what Jessica Kinzer has been doing to try to help us get through the budget crunch and handle the- the budget crunch and handle the tiff things and the contracts that we got and the incentive programs going on for the very interesting, very fun developers that are looking to invest in this town. And so, we have no acting city administrator. I'm going to be it, but trust me, I've got a safety net under me like you can't believe who is so qualified to be helping her. So Cindy, if you don't mind standing, so we can recognize you and thank you for doing that, being here.[624.51][624.51](applause) I can't tell you how delighted I am to have had the help from Jessica, and now to look forward to the help from Cindy. On to the consent agenda. I'll call for a motion, but two councillors have asked that we remove items eight and 10 from that consent agenda. And for those worried about how long they're going to stick around here, I'm also removing item H1 under resolutions from the agenda. We're not ready to be talking about that contract quite yet until we get that done. With that said, with eight and 10 removed, does I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. Another change I should announce, I had our illustrious city clerk check around with other cities our size to find out what they were doing. Does everybody read all of the items on the consent agenda or not? And they don't, and so we're not going to from now on. So, as much as your speed reading has gotten better and your speed talking has gotten good, you get a bye. You don't have to do that. Let's go on to item H. What's our item H resolution?
Resolution 2024-038, approving Bolton &amp; Meek professional service agreement amendment number one for design of the Sixth Street Trailhead project.
Tradition has it that whoever pulled it gets to talk first.
You need a motion first, Your Honor.
I do, don't I?
Moved to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Very good. Now we get to have a discussion.
So my concern on this is based on, at this point, we're starting to do changes, and we haven't even figured out what our costs are yet. We haven't understood what our -- what I'd like to know is what, like, the bridge is going to end up costing. We have, the city has a fixed amount that they have agreed to contribute. The state has a fixed amount that they've agreed to contribute. And I want to make sure we stay on that and know that information before we spend more money. So...
Any other discussion? Staff discussion?
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director. So this project is not part of the Destination Iowa grant. The project you're talking about, the trailhead and the bridge, this is just the trail from where the Sixth Street Bridge is up to the Legion Golf Course. So it is not the bigger Link Creek District project. And we have money funded for the project already. The change that happened, the change that is, the reason why we're asking for this change order is the original plan, the trail was designed to go right behind Wayward Social. In discussing with them, through some easement talks, Terry Busby decided that he wanted to have the trail moved, so in case ever in future he wanted to expand the bowling alley and other things, he would have that option. So we are moving the trail so many feet to the west, more closer to the Legion Golf Course area. So it's going to add a few more feet of trail, and then this is for Bolton &amp; Meek to do that redesign.
This is totally independent from the Destination Iowa.
Correct. And we have funding for it through GL bonds.
In the meeting with them, too, when we had a group meeting to try to figure out from the owners over there, what would be best, it also puts it closer to the tree line, and it's going to be a prettier part of the trail. But it is separate from that.
Yeah, so that was just the paving from where the bridge would, new bridge would be up to Freedom Rock. And we already have the Creekside Estates already paved. So it's basically going from the Legion to the Creekside Estates behind Wayward Social and to connect up to Joe Carter's trail there at Crosby Place.
Any other?
For the clarification.
You bet. Any other questions or comments up here? Any public comment on this one? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
That carried. On to number 10, then. Read that one for us, if you would.
Resolution 2024-040, setting public hearing for a proposed property tax levy for the fiscal year '25 budget.
And I would call for a motion to set that public hearing first.
Still moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second to it?
Second.
All right. Discussion on this one. Who pulled that from the -- do we have a note who pulled that, number 10?
Councilor Mitchell did.
Howdy, Your Honor.
Okay.
Yeah, I begin to understand this pretty well, but we've been having lots of constituents that are kind of confused. So I was wondering if Diane could clarify it a little more for...
Okay.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, at the February 12th meeting, you informally approved the tax levies for fiscal year '25. The same information is on this sheet. It's just in a little different format, as this is official budget work papers that they use. So if you recall, in order to keep the overall levy, tax levy, at $16, which is the same as this current fiscal year, in addition to the 78% of the local option sales tax that we get in every year, using that, we put in additional $1 million to keep the tax levy the same. So you may recall, in prior years, a maximum property tax hearing for specific levies was required, and that was in column A. They were using these numbers, but it did not include the voted-on levies, which is the library and the ban, and the debt and capital projects. And the report before was a comparison of the current year with the next fiscal year. So instead of that report, under House File 17, now the legislature came up with this report. So this includes all the tax levies now. It doesn't exclude any. So in this current column, this is what we have for fiscal year '24. So all of our levies for fiscal year '24, and the city regular tax rate was 16. The next column shows if you had FY '25 valuations, but you used the same dollar amounts as fiscal year '24, what would the levy have been? And it would have been $14.02. And then down at the bottom here, it shows what your, what a residential property with an assessed value of $100,000 would be. So fiscal year '24, we were at $874. Again, with the new valuations, it's at $741. And then this last column is FY '25 valuations with FY '25. And that's what we're requesting now. Again, you kept the levy at $16. The increase from property tax from FY '25 to FY '24 is $1.2 million, which is a 9.11% increase. So if we show $100,000 assessed value for both FY '24 and '25, the residential rollback, which is set by the state, takes into account, they don't want to increase the property tax more than a certain percentage every year. So they set the rollback, so cities can't gain as much as they could. So again, city tax rate, no change, keeping it at $16. What effect would that have? And that's the 874, again, for FY '24, $741 for FY '25. So this is the information that's going to be sent out by the county. The county is doing a mailer. It's going to contain the city, the school district, and the county. And so I have this information on it. It's going to show the comparison between the two fiscal years. So it's an actual reduction of $133 or a 15% decrease. However, there's been many talks amongst finance directors at the state and requesting the state that this is kind of misleading, because that doesn't take into account that your valuations could go up. Now, most of you got your valuations in January, and you noticed that the valuations did go up on your property. So just to give an example, I went back and I compared the residential valuations from this fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '24, and it went up 18.6%. So just as an average, I'm going to do this calculation based on that kind of increase. In that case, taxes would go up by $5 or .57%. So, again, Marshall County provides the assessed valuations, which varies from property to property. And when comparing the overall assessed valuations from fiscal year '24 to '25 for residential properties, valuations went up by 18.6%. So that's what I used for my example. Under Code of Iowa, it is required to show an estimate of the change in budgeted taxes to be paid to the city during fiscal year '25 on a home or a business with an assessed value of $100,000. The decrease between the first two columns is due to the drop in the rollback, since the city's rate is staying the same. This amount of decrease will not likely be what occurs, as the value of property usually increases. So this will be on the hearing for April 1st. We're setting a special meeting. This can be the only agenda item per legislation. So are there any questions?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Diana, would you reiterate when the county, when the taxpayers are going to be expecting this letter coming out to them?
It has to be mailed by the county by March 20th.
Other comments or questions by the council? Any by the public? Let's do the roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. On to the next item, which is G Reports, and it's the I'M ON presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council and Citizens of Marshall Town, thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Bernard Ducek. I'm with I'M ON Communications out of Cedar Rapids. I apologize. Bernard Ducek, I'M ON Communications out of Cedar Rapids, Vice President of Network Operations Engineering. And I also have with me our CEO and President, Patrice Carroll. And we wanted to come introduce Marshall Town to I'M ON Communications. As we've had engineers out looking at Marshall Town, you may have seen some vehicles driving through the street. We did talk earlier in the summer, just to make the city aware that that would be happening. And we think Marshall Town is an awesome community, has a bright future in front of it, and we would love to be a part of that. Who I'M ON Communications is, are creating connections one person at a time, is something we actually do take to heart, that when we come to a community, we plan on being part of that community. We plan on being here for a long time. And we know that if we don't engage with the community and become a part of that community, that goes well for both of us. And so that's something we really like to stress. We are proudly an Iowa company. Almost all our employees live and work in Iowa. Today, we're currently, we're in Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Dubuque, the Sioux City area. We contribute to over 150 nonprofit organizations within those communities. We also, part of what we do is provide free public Wi-Fi to certain parts of towns, where maybe a city park, where a lot of people gather for a summer concert series, or for different events. And so that's something we provide free to citizens of a community we're in. Now, if you are a customer of ours, that's unlimited access. If you are not a customer, you get a few hours' access. So I do want to make that disclaimer. But we feel that's something, a way we can bring, add back to the community, more than just coming in and putting fiber in, that we really do try to engage in the community. Currently, we have, actually, that number's growing to probably over 140,000 servable addresses in those, the markets I mentioned. We serve over 3,500 businesses, and that's everything from the small, local pizza shop or bar up to a Rockwell-Colin-sized company. So we don't just come in and cherry pick the large businesses. We do really work with all businesses throughout each community. So, we've invested over $200 million in our fiber network to date, and we put in over a million feet of fiber just last year alone. So we are greatly expanding. And as I said, we feel Marshall Town is an excellent opportunity for us in a growing community that we would love to be a part of. So, we offer speeds to homes across, you know, 100 meg up to a gig for any resident. This is an all-fiber network, which is important to call out. So we originally started in '07, but have built nothing but fiber since probably 2010, 2011. And we're very proud of that. That is the future technology, from both a just speed, but also reliability. It actually will increase home values. It's also a much more sustainable way to put telecommunications in. As I said, for businesses and well as residents, we provide internet voice solutions, so phone, video services, such as TV. We can transport to, across the country. We do have two data centers we currently own. So if companies need to put some of their storage offsite, we can easily get back there to locations in Cedar, in Iowa City, or Sioux Land. And as I said, we really try to focus not just on the large businesses, but any business, and we treat them equally as far as how we support them. So... Part of our design is to make sure, and this is tough to read there, but hopefully it illustrates, when we come to a community, we try to ring it, so it's redundant. So telecommunications, things break all the time. Ideally, if you've engineered it right, no one notices that. So there's always a backhoe out there digging where it shouldn't be digging, or squirrels chew fiber, who knew? But they greatly will mess up fiber networks at times. So things happen all the time. We try to engineer things, so customers never experience that. That we take care of that behind the scenes, and citizens and companies just go about their day. So our plan would be to ring Marshall Town as well. Most likely, we would come over from Cedar Rapids and continue west to south of Ames, down to Des Moines, where we already have a location down there as well. And then bring that back. We have a central hour ring as well, not shown on here, bring that back to our Iowa City-Cedar Rapids locations. And that's how we would plan on ringing Marshall Town. Those exact routes aren't necessarily in place yet, but that would be the plan. So... When we come into a town, we do put things in the ground. And so we try to be as transparent and as communicative as possible, so citizens are aware, we're coming into your neighborhood. We also make sure the city is seeing every communication we're putting out, whether it's an email, a door tag. We'll put ads in the paper to say, hey, we're going to be building in this area. We make sure the city is aware that each day, here's where we're going to be digging. We have inspectors on site. So we do use contractors when we're building out quite a bit at one time. But we make sure there are inspectors that are I'M ON full-time employees at all times, and the city has those contact information. So you can get ahold of us. And we make sure that you have information that you can give citizens and say, hey, talk to this individual. Here's how you get ahold of I'M ON. So we're not just out there digging up yards and causing confusion or whatever, that you have a resource that you can come point people to, so we can address things. So, yes, we do dig up people's yards, but we make sure you store it to their satisfaction. And we often come back with restoration crews when the time is right. So if it's November, we may not, we may put grass seed down. It may not take, but we would come back in the spring, as an example, to make sure people are happy. So we've bought quite a few hostas, too, at times to replace. So...[1742.35][1742.35](laughter) But we try to be very sensitive to that. But you will see things go up. Down there in the lower left is what we call a hub, and there would be one hub placed in Marshall Town, which our long-haul routes would come into. And from there, we would feed it out to what is called a cabinet. And you see that splitter cabinet in the upper left there. Those will be placed throughout the community. Randy Shone has already been in touch with many, the correct people within the city, to get locations approved, to make sure that those are going into places that will work well with the city, with the citizens and that. So you'll also see those green, what's called, PEDs out in the communities. We try to put those where other utilities are, so we don't just strand that out in the middle of a yard. We try to stay where there are already other utilities, other boxes. We try to stay where there are already other utilities, other boxes in the ground. And people say, well, why don't you just do everything flush mount? A lot of that is because we live in Iowa. During the winter, those will fill up with water, will freeze, and they make support and service very difficult. So we would prefer the green turbo pads, which are above ground, which allows you to support and install throughout the full year. But we will, at times, put things in the ground, and you'll see those handholds out there as well. And we'll make sure we work with the city and get the proper right-of-way and the permit process fully understood. And just last, as I said, we work with many large businesses, but we take them equal, we take them serious, as we do the, you know, the pizza shop, the local bar, the local ice cream shop. We'd love to hear those things and fully support those. So I will open it up to questions. Part of our process is to make sure we are fully engaged with the city, that you guys are well aware of what we're doing, as you get questions. And so, and that's our intent and our purpose for being here as well. Patrice, any other comments you'd like to make before we open it up for questions?
Not really. I don't have any prepared comments, but we are very excited about coming in. Can I come? Yes, I can.
We're streaming it, so the people at home are wondering, who's talking?
Okay. Who's talking? I'm Patrice Carroll, and I'm the President and CEO of I'M ON Communications and a founder. We've been in business about seventeen years, and we started very, very small, and now we're only small. So we have worked our way up. Marshalltown looks like a very, very interesting town for us, so we're very excited. When you're small, you have to be crystal clear about what you compete on. And we compete on customer service and treating every customer as an individual, and we're very proud of that. The other thing we compete on is the quality of our network. As Bernard said, it's ringed. We have twenty-four-hour monitoring. We are very responsive, whether it's a rodent or any of the other, marry the things that attack our fiber. We take that very seriously. So I'm very excited to be here, and I too am open to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions by the council?
Yes. Do you have a target date when you'd like to have Marshalltown done?
Yes.
We do.
Yes, we do.
We would shoot to finish ten thousand addresses by the end of the year. So probably you wouldn't see shovels in the ground till August-ish, but then we would build it out very quickly, which we realize can be a strain on citizens, and that's why we try to communicate as much as we do. But the plan would not be a five-year plan. It would be done very quickly. So let's say, starting late August, putting in ten thousand addresses by the end of 2024 is our current goal.
And for us, the end of twenty-four is the week before Thanksgiving, because December's unreliable weather-wise, because we live in Iowa. I mean, we will work into December if we can, but we shoot to have it done before the holidays start.
You can always start over here in the northeast part of town. My wife would love that, by the way. We're very welcoming over there.
That's good to know.
Good to know.
That's good to know.
You know how excited I was to have you come into my office and visit about it, because we need the competition here, and fiber optic cable is wonderful. We tried to get some companies to do a little more around here, and that didn't happen. But I'm talking, and I should not be. Anybody else like to talk up here?
Your Honor, I just have a question.
Go for it.
So we have several utilities that have been buried in the downtown area, and I live close to downtown. So when you're putting yours in, you're cutting your competitor's stuff, is that right?
We, we-
We tried really hard during the ticket.
Sure, yeah, we try very hard not to. We make sure we follow the locate process, we make sure we follow the permitting process. We do use aerial lines where they are and where they're going to stay. So I know if Alliant, we communicate heavily with Alliant, and they say, hey, two years from now, we're going to pull those poles out. We would go underground. But other areas where they're going to stay, we would use the aerial lines, depending on the part of town, what the current infrastructure looks like. But we do have things, everything's located before we dig. Now, do we never hit anything? I'd say no, but we make sure that gets fixed and paid for as quickly as possible.
So some residences would have aerial lines coming into them, some would be buried all the way up to the house, correct?
Correct.
Right. We follow power. If power is aerial, then we'll follow, and if it's underground, then we'll follow. Alliant is a very good partner of ours. In fact, we're working on, with them, on getting a route to here, so.
So if you're looking at having ten thousand customers-
Addresses.
Addresses, yes. So you've already started on running this main cable from Cedar Rapids?
That has started.
So are you in Tama yet?
We are not in Tama, so, yet. But we would go through Tama. Tama has other things, and we would continue to look at them, but they do have other, yep, yep. So we feel Marshalltown is the best place to start for Central Iowa, so.
To have Alliant as a partner, they're a big player in this town for what they've done here, so.
Yes, yes.
And they were really good when we needed to bury lines over by the Veterans Home. They were going to be above ground with these huge ugly poles. The neighborhood got together, the city helped, and they buried it underground. And if you drive by there now, it really is a lot prettier than it-
Yes, they're in Dubuque and Cedar Rapids, so we work with them extensively. We've also reached out to the local Alliant folks here in town to make sure we understand the community, because every community is a little different, especially a community that's survived tornadoes and durachos and that in the last few years. So we make sure we reach out to the local Alliant people as well and know, hey, this is what we're looking to do. The longest pole in the construction, I guess, pun intended, is the pole application process with Alliant, and we work closely with them on that. It doesn't mean it speeds it up necessarily, but we make sure we follow all the correct steps for Alliant to get things approved, so we can get on poles, so.
Are the council comments or questions?
Your Honor, if I, I thought of one more question, if I may. Going back to your support of nonprofits, is that strictly financial, or can you touch on a couple examples of that?
It certainly is financial, but we also have, every employee does sixteen hours a year, that they can just use that time to go volunteer with a nonprofit of their choice. We participate in Habitat for Humanity Days. We participate in Days of Caring within Cedar Rapids and Dubuque, which through United Way as well. And so that's a service project that occurs twice a year, where we may go out and plant flowers in the downtown area. We have rebuilt school playgrounds, you know. So we do that as well, as, Patrice, you serve on many nonprofit boards, and we provide leadership there to different boards, so.
We make the decision-
Microphone.
Sorry. We make the decision on how to engage with the community, based on the community, and what, you know, what's important to the community that we're in. As we've grown, we've really understood that every community has its own personality, okay? And it's important for I'M ON to go into communities that, A, want us there, and A, that we're a good match for, that we can, you know, give back. Our success is dependent on the community, and so we feel it's really important that we engage, give back, and be a part of the community. We will be putting a team here that will be based in, or based in Marshalltown, and, you know, so if you know any good telecommunications people, let Bernard know.
And we know there's already competition here, as the mayor said. It is about giving them a choice. We do not shy away at all from competition. We may not always be the cheapest, but we do believe, we know, we provide the best value for citizens, so.
Anybody else up here before I open it up to the public? Okay. Well, thank you, well, and let me open it up to the public, if anybody has any comment out there. I know there's a press release coming out tomorrow, and in it, I'll be quoted as saying, I checked you out. I called the mayor's office in Dubuque, I called the mayor's office in Cedar Rapids. They love you, they couldn't believe how well you put things in and fixed it up, they weren't experiencing problems. The mayor told me he'd never got a single complaint about how you were installing things. So I, for one, am pretty excited to see you in town here. Thank you.
Yes, we do get some complaints. We just make sure we address them quickly, so yes.
Well, as I shared with the mayor, I'm pretty sure he gets the big complaints, and he didn't get any, and I know about the little complaints, too.
That is our goal, that the city never has to hear those, that we take care of them, well before it gets to having to come.
My dad grew up in Sioux City, I'll be checking with the mayor up there, too.
Okay. All right.
Thanks much. Appreciate that input. All right, let's go on to item H, number two, resolutions.
Resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-two, approving the voluntary severance of one oh-two College View Lane, parcel eight-three-one-eight-one-four-four-five-three-zero-zero-two.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move for approval, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works, filling in for community development. This evening, we are bringing forward a resolution to approve the severance request that was discussed at the last meeting. This is for one oh-two College View Lane. It is a six-point-seven-four-acre parcel on the south side of town, assessed at five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars, and I will open it up for discussion.
Before that, before that, I was just going to invite you folks, you don't need to stick around for the rest of the meeting. I'm fond of telling people that. Every once in a while, somebody takes umbrage at that, but thank you for coming.
If you have our contact information, please feel free to reach out if you have other follow-up questions.
Very good. Okay, floor is open for discussion up here.
So Max Moltman, one oh-two College View Lane. During last time's city council meeting, Mr. Eaton had some brilliant comments about the fifty-five-year-old history of his and my property, and how the annexation into the city was not done according to Iowa law or code. And the other thing is, is that there was a comment about this potentially setting a bad precedent for the city, but I think these two properties are the most unusual cases within the city limits, and in fact, I believe it would set a good and the right precedent by showing everyone that the city is correcting things that were wrong and now making them right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Let's call the roll.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
No.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Carried, right? If I counted right?
Yes.
Thank you. I was going to suggest, we enjoyed having your daughter last time, too. Where is she tonight? Just kidding, you don't need to answer that. But she did a nice job. Onto, carried, on to the next one.
Resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-three, authorizing the use of council-designated local option sales tax for the repair of City Hall and Carnegie Building masonry in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. Back on January twenty-fifth, we had a discussion regarding the budget and Fund O Thirty, which is building maintenance. At that time, we had a budget in there, a placeholder of thirty-five thousand dollars to look at the repair or the replacement of two limestone steps entering City Hall. We've gone back and discussed that with two different contractors and have received a quote for those. While we were out there and walking around the building, we also found some other areas that are not a safety hazard, but more of an aesthetic, long-term, and we also did get a quote at that time. So these pictures are the ones that we shared in January, as far as the front steps of City Hall and the deterioration of those steps. We believe that can be restored, repaired with a top coat bonding agent, and we're requesting a not-to-exceed amount of six thousand five hundred for that work. We also talked about these window sills that are on the north side of the building. These are currently adjacent to some landscaping area. With the upcoming State Street project, they will be adjacent to sidewalks, so they're going to be a little bit more noticeable moving forward. So we did go ahead and request quotes also for that work, and requesting not to exceed eight thousand five hundred, if council so chooses to add that to the work. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
Floor is open for questions by the council?
Your Honor, I think we should move ahead with all of these. We need to take good care of our buildings, and especially the safety issue, take care of that, but if we let these window sills linger, they'll just get worse, too. I say we proceed with everything.
Any public comment? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Carried. Next item.
Public hearing and resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-four, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for three-ten North Fifth Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to David Heddins.
The public hearing is now open at six-thirty-six P.M. Did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. I don't see anybody rushing to the mic. Time for staff review.
Mr. Honor, bids were opened on February sixth for the sale of five city-owned vacant lots. We received three bids on this lot, and the high bid was one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. And time for council comments. The public hearing is closed at six-thirty-six P.M. Should I solicit a motion to proceed?
Yes.
I said a move.
We'll count that as a motion and second. Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried as well. Next one.
Public hearing and resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-five, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for one oh-two North Twenty-second Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Dan Oswald.
Public hearing is open at six-thirty-seven. I assume you've received no written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. Nobody's rushing to the mic. Staff review.
We received two bids on this lot, and the high bid was two thousand one dollars.
Council comments is next. Hearing none. The public hearing is open, closed at six-thirty-seven. I think that set a record. Is there a motion to approve it?
So move? Second.
Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried. This will be tough to set the record lower. Public hearing is open at six-thirty-eight P.M. Did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comment? Time for staff review? Time for council?
We received one bid on this lot. It was for one thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you. Time for council comments. Declare the public hearing closed at six-thirty-eight P.M. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Abstained due to a conflict of interest?
That carried, you know, if I'd slowed it down a little bit, there might have been some questions or public comments.
Someone could have amended the price, maybe.
Okay, our next one.
Public hearing and resolution twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-seven, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for seven-nineteen North Fourth Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Laverne A. Wickham.
Public hearing is open at six-thirty-nine. Public hearing is open at 6:39. You didn't receive any written comments unless you tell me you did. And time for public comments. Nobody's going to talk on this one. Staff review.
We received two bids on this lot with the high bid being $5,025.
Any council comments? Declare the public hearing is closed at 6:39 PM. Is there a motion to approve?
It's a move, your honor.
Second.
Roll call.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Next and last.
Public hearing and resolution 2024-048 providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 901 North Fifth Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Dan Oswald.
The public hearing is open at 6:40 PM and you didn't receive any written comments, did you?
No, your honor.
Time for public comments and then staff review.
Received five bids on this lot with the high bid being $3,000.
Time for council comments if any. And I declare the public hearing is closed at 6:40. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Carried as well. Onto item I ordinances. We just have one. What's that?
Ordinance 15082 to amend the code of ordinances city of Marshalltown, Iowa by amending chapter 53 Stormwater by amending section 53.006 rate structure and stormwater rate. Second reading.
Move for approval, your honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion up here? Discussion out there? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto discussion items. Unity Point Secondary Access Road Project is first.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. The item in front of you this evening is related to some discussion and direction that council was given to city staff back in 2020 and 2021. At the time that the hospital was located down there, there was a requirement through the fire code that they provide two access roads into the facility. There's the one coming through Central Iowa Drive, which I think is now Unity Point Way, and they needed a second one. So there was discussion about working with the New Hope Church to create a second access driveway at that point. At that time, there was discussion with council about what happens if we turn that second access point driveway from a private driveway to a public street with the potential that maybe there would be future development to the west of the New Hope Church. At that time, council directed city staff to go ahead and proceed in that direction. City staff went ahead and hired an engineer and partnered with Unity Point Health back in 2021 to design that road as a city street. Since that time, some of the negotiations with the New Hope Church have not resulted in a favorable outcome and there has not been firm land that has been acquired for this project. During that project, also there are several aspects that a normal new city street would need to meet that were pulled out of this project. Marshalltown Water Works indicated that at this time, there's no development planned down in this area and so they did not care to put in a dead end water main at this time. There was some concern during negotiations that installing sidewalks along this would be a deal breaker for the church because they would then be responsible for removing snow. And so there was going to be a request for sidewalk deferment. And additionally, the topography of this area, it falls off to the west. And so we were only able to bring gravity sanitary sewer about halfway to the west on the road, which would allow for a future connection of a lift station, a wastewater lift station. Because there's no idea of what that development was be would be and how much capacity would be needed in that lift station. That was kind of the stopping point until there was future development. So we're at a position right now where we're looking for council direction to whether to let Unity Point Health know that the city is interested in continuing to pursue this option or at this time, if we would like to go ahead and say that the city is not interested in pursuing a public street. At that time, they would still have the requirement to provide a secondary access road that would remain a private driveway. We do have representatives here from the Fire Marshal's Office and also Unity Point Health if there are additional questions.
Your honor, if I may. Heather, if, so the require, I want to make sure I understand this. The requirement was Unity Point Health had to have a second entrance and exit. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and this has gotten delayed because we started this whole conversation about is it a driveway or is it a street? So if we don't pursue putting a street in, what would be their timetable to put the driveway in?
I can defer that question to Josh Whornell, the Fire Marshal who's here this evening.
Josh Whornell, Marshalltown Fire Department, 909 South Second Street. So you want a timeframe on when they need to put the second access in? We would have to talk to them. That hasn't been in discussion yet, so.
Nothing that was put on hold and the clock starts ticking again. It's just something that needs to be negotiated, correct?
No, yeah, this was approached, I think, four years ago under Jessica and there was never a time. It was all banked on if they could come to an agreement with the church, so.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, your honor.
Any other council questions? Or public comment? So for the hospital, who, what options do they see at this point in time?
I'm Sherri King, 904 Custer. I am the hospital administrator at Unity Point Health, Marshalltown. We would still potentially pursue this option that is in the graphic. It's also possible we would look at some other solutions depending on how negotiations proceeded with New Hope Church. So I think we're looking at a lot of different opportunities. Underdope, we absolutely understand we need a second access, especially with the ambulance service. So yes, we're eager to get something in there too.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Do we need a staff direction on this one?
I would ask for council direction tonight whether to discontinue the city's efforts in putting a public street in this location.
Your honor, if I may. I would, I would suggest that we let Unity Point put in a driveway and we discontinue putting the negotiations to put a street in. And I mean, I don't want to make that as a motion to direct staff. I'd like to hear what other people have to say, obviously.
Looking at the map, is there any value in having a dialogue with center associates? Because they do have an access drive to get into their property.
I would say that is a possibility. And there's also Larry Allen still owns a property. Oh, sorry. Yeah, we're in YouTube.
Sorry.
I would say, yes, that would be a potential and Larry Allen still owns a quarter of that parcel as well. So there are some, a couple of other potentials.
Your honor, if I may. You may. I'm going to agree with Councilor Thompson here. Let them go ahead and put their lane in. Discontinue looking at doing a street out there. I don't see it as a necessity right now for the city. And that would give them the access that they need.
Greg Nichols, I just see required to be a street would just be an impediment at this point in time. So I think we should move forward with allowing them to be a drive.
It is a nice entrance. I was out there this morning and well, well marked. It's easy to find the main entrance and so this would be just kind of the outlet for the emergency folks. Anybody else up here? Any public comment on this one? I think you have your direction without a formal vote.
You need a, do you need formal or the nodding heads enough?
Nodding heads is enough for me. We'll stop the work on this. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. CO2 Systems Development Proposal is our last item to discuss.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Hall with the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce at 34 West Main Street. Happy to be here in front of you tonight with a new development proposal. So Zach Laws with CO2 Refrigeration Systems and I engaged in conversation would have been late 2023, looking for opportunities for growth of his company here in Marshalltown. At the same time, he was pursuing options in, I think, both Ames and Ankeny. Long circle back around, finally landed on an opportunity that that we, he believes will work for him. During this process, we have engaged with the state of Iowa to pursue a high quality jobs application and have met the expectations as part of that, which includes both a wage threshold as well as a benefits package that is deemed competitive by the state of Iowa. So in our engagement with the state, the project scope is roughly a $4 million project. And the award from high quality jobs, assuming their board approval at the March 22nd board meeting, would be for $177,500. In addition, there's a $365,200, $365,205 incentive through the 260E New Jobs Training Program, which is administered through the Community College System. It's a deferral of payroll tax, so it's not actually out of the community college budget, but it comes through that way. Bringing the overall incentive package to about $477,500. There is a local match requirement as a component of the high quality jobs incentive of at least $20,000 in order to go into the project. The project is expected to create within three years, 48 new jobs. The starting wage at those would be $22.50, average wage at $26. Again, a competitive benefits package where the employer has agreed to pay 100% of the, of the premium for insurance for both individuals and family. So we see this as a highly competitive opportunity and a great company to be able to recruit here. And I'll let Zach talk a little bit about himself and his company.
Awesome. Thank you for the introduction, John. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak tonight. So Zach Laws, 1004 West Main Street. I don't know if, did anybody take swimming lessons in Nancy Stone's swimming school or kids? So that's, that's the house my lovely wife and I bought 10 years ago. And you've probably seen us out on our scaffolding or chipping away. We've restored that house since then. Only swam in the pool twice before the tornado ruined the pool shed, so I'm a little sour about that. But in terms of, so Marshall County native, my wife and I were both born and raised here. So starting a manufacturing business here. We signed a purchase agreement for Scott Manufacturing or what used to be Scott Manufacturing here on East Anson Street. We believe that facility will suit our needs very well. In terms of our focus, so our manufacturing business is focused on industrial and commercial refrigeration systems. So kind of the smallest system we would build would be a system that would serve a Fairway or Hy-Vee. And the largest system we would build would be as big as a JBS Swift and Company or kind of sky's the limit in terms of size. The technology that we're bringing to the U.S. is a technology that I became familiar with when my wife and I lived over in Australia. My refrigeration, refrigeration career started at Linux or HVAC, I guess you'd say, and then took us overseas to Australia. And we learned about CO2 refrigeration systems over in Australia. Brought that technology back to the States here and we're starting a business here in Iowa. We've got some tailwinds with some regulations that are really tightening up the, the move and migration to CO2 through the AIM Act that is requiring all supermarkets to migrate their enterprises to 85% natural refrigerants by 2036. So got a lot of tailwinds in terms of business growth. Really excited about the, the opportunity and the upside here in the U.S. market. So our target market is North America. We're not selling outside of North America. And we've got a strong focus on kind of low volume, high value. We've got a lot of competitors that crank out thousands of units. And we're more of the bespoke one-off, heavy engineering type, type applications. We do not compete with Linux. We have no product portfolio that overlaps, so that's an important thing to note. We'll be heavy on the engineering side, heavy on the assembly side with our, our manufacturing production here in Marshalltown. And as, as John mentioned, high job, high value job creation, we're looking to or striving to create 48 jobs over the next three years. And a lot of those jobs will be welders, brazers, assemblers, which happens to align very nicely with some of the programs we already have at MCC and through, through Linux and Fisher and many of those established programs. Obviously hiring engineers as well as a part of that hire. We are looking to close on our property on March 25th is our close date. And we would start production on April 30th and would greatly appreciate any support that could be provided in terms of funding, so.
Yep, just a couple of final details. So tonight, we're asking for you all to effectively make a motion to bring forth a resolution of support committing to at minimum of $20,000 so that the state board at their March 22nd meeting may consider this application. Again, there is a requirement by the state of Iowa to have at least a $20,000 match as a component of their application in order for them to be awarded the high quality jobs application. There are two employees right now and we look forward to them getting up to 50 in the next three years. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to help answer those.
Time for council questions.
Your honor, if I may.
You may.
So Zach, the, the old Scott insulation buildings, that's strictly going to be a manufacturing site? You'll prefab and then take stuff to construct?
Correct. So we'll be manufacturing out of that site. And it's probably worth noting that we're not a contractor and installer. We just build the systems and then we sell. Contractors would be our customers, as would end users like Hy-Vee or Fairway. So we're purely a manufacturer. After it leaves our dock, it's, it's property of the customer.
Then you're not feeding them the CO2. They get that from somebody else, right?
Correct. Yep, they'd source that through other channels. But we, we will use some CO2 in our testing, but just very minimal. Yep.
Thank you, your honor. Other council comments or questions?
Yeah, this is exciting. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, your, your foundation and, and your roots in Marshalltown are appreciated and glad you believe in us and are bringing this forward. So fully support it.
Thank you, Barry.
We sure spent a lot of time at Nancy's place watching the kids learn how to swim.
The pool shed has not changed over the years. I can assure you that.
Well, this is exciting. It reminds me of when we were missing out on some of the grants to get the, the Al River, what was the Al River Trail now, the Rivers Edge Trail by not having any contribution from the city. And I think it was $20,000 that the city was able to see fit to contribute and that did help us get some grants to get that going too.
So your honor, this, or for John, this $20,000 has to be a grant, correct? Or can it be a loan? Can it, it has to be a grant and it has to come from the city itself?
So there's a match requirement of $20,000. It could be a loan, but it would have to be a forgivable loan. There would have to be an exit on the backend on there. It does not have to come from the city. It could come from, from others. But it is a requirement match. I will say, if it doesn't come from the city, the state will be upset. I mean, they'll, they'll be, they'll be visibly frustrated. It's an expectation across the state that cities contribute on projects, especially of this caliber. I mean, this is, truthfully, most of the times when we are seeing projects like this and seeing a job count like this, we'd expect maybe 10 to 15% of them to hit the qualifying wage threshold. And it would end up in a, in a much smaller incentive. This is for, for the, the job creation that we're getting and the magnitude of the wages, a real high impact opportunity. As well as the growth that I think Zach's already starting to see within his company could mean additional opportunities for, for Marshalltown in the future. And I won't speak for Zach on that, much more than to say I'm excited about potential future opportunities, so.
Your honor, I would make a motion in full support of this project and also the city donate the $20,000 for the project out of local option sales tax.
If I might, we can potentially utilize TIF. I haven't circled with the city finance to determine what we've got available in TIF. So there could be multiple ways to, to approach this, either through a TIF funding agreement or local option sales tax.
Let's, let's see if there's a second first.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And then for discussion.
Did I offer an amendment to that motion?
Good.
How about we leave it open to the city to propose different funding mechanisms and we'll decide at resolution time? Or could they give us two resolutions, one with potentially using TIF, one with lost?
Is there a second to that motion to amend? I'll make that a second and I'd ask the city to kind of make their recommendations on those two things, or it could be a mix. So, well, I haven't asked for really.
If I might, we don't have to commit to the source with the resolution. All we need to do is have a resolution of support from the council committing to the dollar amount. We can figure out the source through a development agreement later.
Yeah, I would like to pull my amendment, your honor.
Okay. Well, and so we still need a second to the motion, probably.
We have a second on the original motion.
On the original motion, I missed that. Okay. I haven't called for public comment. This might not hurt.
It's his birthday. Don't confuse him, John.
I want my cake. Let's call a roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Ladihoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That's exciting stuff and it's a good example of what the local option sales tax has been able to do in the past. Hope we can continue it in the future.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That ends our. That ends our agenda items, and it's seven o'clock straight up. Thank you for coming. We're adjourned.